This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I'm going to do a roll call and get this meeting started. So Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. Hello. Well, okay, so I'm going to start just with an apology to the community. We had some really crazy technological problems last week and had to cancel that meeting. We're very sorry about that, but there was no rescuing it. We worked for hours to figure it out and it couldn't happen. So I apologize that. The other thing I want to announce is just to make sure and clear up any confusion. The governor gave us permission until March 31st of 2023 to have Zoom meetings. So we are going to continue that at least for the time being. When we go back in person, we will be doing hybrid meetings because one of the things that's happened is we've noticed that many more people can come and attend these meetings as long as they're hybrid or remote. So when we do get back in person, we will definitely make them hybrid meetings as long as we can. And I believe that will be forever unless something changes. Because it will allow people to tune in from their home. And I think that's really important. And it's been really beneficial, I think, for the community to have everybody able to weigh in. So we will absolutely continue that. So hopefully that clears up any confusion and you're just going to plow on. Do we have any correspondence?
We don't have too much. It's been fairly quiet, but we have a few things to report out. So we received correspondence from Jenny Papa George and Ann Tally, who wrote together urging the school committee and administrators to think about innovative ideas for school transportation, citing the fact that we don't have... Can you hear me? I'm sorry. I thought that was to me. Citing that we don't have public transportation options in East Hampton and that many families, even if it's technically walkable to school, don't actually have a feasible walkable path. And suggesting things like perhaps retired community volunteers, similar to what the Council of Aging has implemented. Let's see, we've also received a few emails from the director of Young World, from a couple of parents and from the director, I believe it was the director of Our Lady in town, all asking about transportation plans for this upcoming year as there are families who use before and after school care with each of those two locations. And of course, what they used to do was just walk over and just walk to school. And so now they will require busing to get there from their childcare location. So urging clarity on what it looks like and costs associated and just making sure that families...
Some kid took 22. Sean, somebody's a little...
I'm gonna just see if we can... Can we mute that?
It's Patty Slate's iPhone. Patty, you need to mute.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Megan.
That's all right. So just some clarity about that procedure, not just for this year, but like how will that work as we move forward? Received a nice email, this is starting to go back about a month, from Christian Reader, from Comics &amp; More, expressing continued concern and vigilance around the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm curious about what COVID protocols would be for this year. And again, urging at least the availability of free, high-quality masks for students and staff. I think that might be it.
So we have the grant update. So are you going to cover that, Dr. Leclerc?
I think that's part of Nick's presentation. Yeah, Mr. Burnier will do it.
Okay, the update from Governor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put that on when? Next meeting or...
No, no, no. Mr. Burnier, who's here in the meeting tonight, has the section after me on the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, so we're just gonna move that down. Okay. All right. Do we have gifts?
We do have a gift. I would like to make a motion to approve a donation of a beautifully framed print of the last day of school drone picture from Maple School, which was gifted from John Cartledge.
I'll second that. With thanks. Lori Garcia, yes. And Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Maren?
Definitely, yes.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Shannon? Shannon, you're either frozen or just muted. Okay.
I'm fine. Yes, Shannon, done.
Okay, it's Cindy Kuzinski. Yes, thank you very much. That's great. All right. So we do not have a student representative yet. That will be at our next meeting. That person has not been chosen. So it's now time to open up for public comment. So if anybody would like to say anything, please indicate. And remember, keep your... Say who you are and keep your speech or thoughts to about three minutes, please. And I'm not seeing anybody. Signal. Hold on. I'm gonna let somebody else in. So maybe. All right. We are waiting for anybody to indicate that they want to talk in public speak.
Cindy, if you want me to help with letting folks in or muting, I think you can hopefully now make me a co-host.
Let me... Let's find out. Let's find out. I think I'm gonna have to wait. So I have to do it. I'm looking for extra. I've not seen that. Oh dear. All right, we'll work on it. We're getting piece by piece, we're getting the ability to go back to normal. But I think I'm gonna have to make a few more adjustments before the next meeting. So I'll have to do it for now. Well, wait a minute. Let me try one more thing. It might work. Hold on. Wait a minute. Okay. And let me try this. If that happens. Oh, it is now. Now it's gonna let me. Yay, there we go. All right, we're good. Okay. All right, so we've enabled live transcription and Megan, you're now co-host. All right. Okay, that's excellent. So things are coming back. All right, I'm gonna just put "share the screen" for when Dr. Leclerc wants to do that and we'll get going with that. I'm gonna close public speak since nobody has indicated a desire to talk. And we're gonna go on with our presentation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Leclerc.
Thank you. So let me start. Our presentation tonight is around Mountain View School because I know that a lot of families are very excited to be going to Mountain View School starting this week. So I went around, took some pictures, had some things I wanted to share out with families so that they can get a better sense of how everything has been going. There's still some action going on at Mountain View. They're still finalizing the athletic field areas and the maintenance building and some of the landscaping around the grounds, but that's all fenced off. The construction area is separated from any area where children will be. So that's the first thing I wanted to share with families. So I think that this committee has seen Mountain View Middle School. You've seen that entrance several times. I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory. And this is, I think, not old news, but the families that have been going there since January are familiar with this entrance. This is the middle school entrance. And here we have the elementary school entrance. So we're going to focus more on the elementary side of the building so that parents of elementary children can get a better sense of what the inside of the building looks like. And you'll see some of the same themes, a lot of nice glass, very welcoming, the beautiful walkways, and there's stone walls. It's very inviting. This is our team for anyone in the community that does not know who the folks are that are running that building. We have Meredith Belice, who is the grade 68 principal. We have Judy Avril, who's the pre-K through 2 principal. Andrea McCallum, who's the grade 3 through 5 principal. Heather Dean is the next person, and she is a new position. This is COVID-funded, grantesser-funded. She is the social emotional coordinator. And we have Jill Pesquini-Torkia, who is the head of school. And I know families like to get an idea of who people are and put names and faces together. So what can families expect from Mountain View School? It's bright, it's clean, filled with light. That's the benefit of having a brand-new building. The hallways are grade-level hallways. So I know sometimes families worry about, oh, it's this big, it's a big school. Will my child get lost? Well, if your child is a kindergartner or a first grader, they'll primarily just be in their own hallway. The first hallway is preschool and kindergarten. So those are the only children that they'll really encounter during their day. We have a first-grade hallway, a second-grade hallway, and then upstairs, we have a third-grade hallway, a fourth-grade hallway, and a fifth-grade hallway. So students are clumped together and grouped together, and that also provides the opportunity for teachers to work collaboratively together all throughout the day. We have joyful spaces. The design and the colors are very well thought out. There are bright primary colors in the elementary side of the building, more muted tones on the middle school side. It's very inviting. There's little tiles along the entrance in the elementary side that's like a little river that runs through the floor to help navigate students to the building. The play areas outside are very natural-looking and very age-appropriate. The exploration areas, there's spaces for outdoor classrooms outside, whether that be reading or science. There's all kinds of areas outside, which was somewhat missing at our old elementary schools. You know, green space, places for play. There'll be abundant parking once all the parking lots are finished. We still have one parking area that's not quite concluded yet because that's where construction vehicles are. But there should be enough parking for the start of school for all our staff. And we have art, music. We have two big libraries. We have a giant gym, and I'll show you a few pictures of those spaces. This is a typical kindergarten classroom. You'll see what we're talking about by light and bright, bright colors. All of the equipment and materials in there are new, new desks, new chairs. There's another angle I can show you as well. New reading area tables. You can see off to the left a little bit, there's kind of a doorway you can see that goes to the bathrooms in the kindergarten classrooms. So the little ones don't need to leave the classroom and go down the hallway to go to the bathroom. The bathrooms are shared between two classes, like a Jack and Jill kind of bathroom. There's two bathrooms in there, a boys' bathroom and a girls' bathroom. Here's another look at a kindergarten classroom. You can see the bright windows. They have shades, but the shades are up in this teacher's room. And you can see just how welcoming and inviting it is. This is a picture of a typical elementary classroom. So this might be a second or third grade classroom. And you can see, probably you can get a sense already, we have these trapezoid desks that are new and teachers are kind of configuring them in all different ways, how they wanna try and have their classroom look. You can see there are kind of wobble seats in the front of this image. They're circular. And they can be taken apart. They can be short and to the ground, or they can be stacked up three and be regular height to be pushed up to a table or a desk. We have lots of different kinds of seating in classrooms. I know some people asked, well, primarily Megan, but Megan was asking on behalf of other people, about air quality in the new school because it is different from, you know, some of our experiences in the past. So we added, after the project was already designed, we added bipolar ionization to the dedicated outside air units, which was recommended as a COVID safety precaution, as another way to, you know, kill viruses, not just COVID, but any virus. We added UVC air disinfection. So these were all add-ons after the project already started. Once we started the project, just to remind everyone, in January of 2020, the design had already been set at that point. But then March 2020 came and we needed to reevaluate some things. We improved all the MERV rating on the HVAC unit filters. We've increased runtime and occupied mode so that it goes on earlier and stays on later. And the exam room in the nurse's office has been modified to function as an isolation room. So it has its own unique airflow system, which was another lesson learned from COVID. So we've tried to be very responsive to air quality. And just so people know, like the high school, this is not a building where staff would be opening windows. The airflow is actually optimized by letting the system run inside. It is climate-controlled. So if you open windows, you turn off the system in that room. So it prevents optimal airflow. So we've encouraged teachers not to open windows. So I don't want people to think, wow, you know, we need to go back to when we were in the old elementary schools and have our windows open like we did on the buses and everything. This building actually operates better and is more high efficiency if the windows are closed, as is our high school. It's so nice to be talking about two buildings that are so new. Our high school, just to remind people, is only from 2013. So we're very fortunate. We have a large gymnasatorium. This actually is a bird's eye view from the second floor of the elementary school. This space can actually be sectioned off into three actual teaching spaces. And that's how it will be operated most of the time. So it's one gym, but it's giant. Here's a picture of the elementary school library. Look how light and bright that is. It's on the second floor of the school. It's very bright, welcoming. You'll notice that we made really thoughtful decisions about lighting so that there wasn't like fluorescent lighting shining in people's eyes all day long. We tried to put kind of different types of lighting in spaces. What you probably see off to the right-hand corner is a little stage area. There's comfy chairs. I couldn't capture it all in this one image. And also, the librarian was still unpacking that day, so I tried to just get the best angle. This is the elementary art classroom. You'll see this room looks a little different from other rooms. It has tables, it has stools, it has floors that are easily washed. If there's paint spilled, there's a kiln room off behind, beyond that door. There's lots of places, lots of drying racks. So this is a space that looks a little different than a regular classroom because of the type of lessons that will be going on in there. Here's our lovely cafeteria on the elementary side. You can see the bright colors. You can see how we've tried to be playful in the design of the floor. There is an outdoor area beyond the cafeteria where elementary children could go out and have lunch at picnic tables supervised. So on nice days, they'll be able to kind of spread out a little bit more than just the cafeteria. This is just the elementary cafeteria. Then what you're seeing up against the wall is the kitchen, and then beyond that is the middle school cafeteria. Some safety points I wanted to make for everyone, just because I know people start thinking about that as they send their children back to school. We've designed this building to ensure maximum awareness of surroundings through clear, unobstructed sightlines. And we've tried to incorporate multiple layers with intentional stopping points between school grounds and the more secure student classrooms. This strategy is known as crime prevention through environmental design. And the goal is to slow the progress of an adversary long enough for first responders to arrive and take control of the situation. You might see a lot of glass, say, on that elementary entrance as I showed you. But what you need to know is that the administrative assistants have that glass view. They see anyone coming at them from the beginning of the driveway, from the end of the walkway, all the way to them. They can see someone approaching. We've been thoughtful about the types of landscaping we put in so we don't have landscaping that obstructs anyone's view. So we've really tried to make very intentional design choices. We've done that with the planners, we've done that with the consultation of the police and the fire. So people have been involved in this process and have provided input for years. Some additional safety measures. Let me see, I can't see this. All exterior doors remain locked during school hours. Everyone knows that. But if you have a kindergartner, that might be reassuring to hear. Exterior doors are monitored and controlled by electronic access control system, meaning you need to be buzzed. The entry sequence on both the elementary and the middle school side forces all visitors to pass through the administrative office before gaining access to the lobby and the rest of the school building. So any adult has to go in through the lobby before you can get access to the school. So you must check in with someone that's on staff. And visitors must identify themselves through a video intercom station in the vestibule. So before you even get buzzed in, the administrative assistant is asking how they can help you, what you're there for, and, you know, asking questions before they buzz you into their office. So a few events that... And again, this presentation was for last week, so we missed the first information. The information nights were last Wednesday night for families. And I know families got a lot of information from those events. I heard they were very well-attended and well-received. Mountain View families will have open house with teachers on Wednesday, September 21st. That's for the families to go visit their child's classrooms, like we have open house every year. And then we're planning a Mountain View community open house with tours on Saturday, October 15th, from 12 to 3. So that's when the community can come out and check out our building and take their time and peruse all the different areas. And that's one of our courtyards. Isn't it lovely? And that's my final slide. So any questions about Mountain View?
No, I think it looks gorgeous. And you answered my question about when the community's gonna be invited to come see it because so many people have been asking, so...
Yeah, it's still, you know, there is still a construction area, so we're really just trying to get as much of that done because we want to optimize parking for that day. We want it to be a really positive event where everyone in the community can come out.
I think October 15th is fine. What are you going to do in terms of making sure the whole community gets that information?
So Jean Libby is our parent and family engagement coordinator, and she's been working on it. She has press packets. She's been doing all kinds of things. She's working on a logo for the event right now. And they have outside vendors, food vendors, musicians. So she's been going to town on it. So we'll get the word out.
Cool. That was the only questions I had. Lori?
I just want to add that I'm very thankful to Jean because she had a fantastic idea to combine our fall event for the walk, bike, and roll. We're gonna do it that day, October 15th, to then be able to educate all of the families in the city if they don't already know how to get to the school with the bike path. And we have the exciting new addition that will be in the works. So we have teamed up with Safe Foods to School. We've told Lucy, our coordinator, about having it on Saturday rather than that normal Wednesday event in October. So we'll combine both, and it will be really fun. So I thank Jean for having that really good idea to encourage people to go to the school by means other than cars so we won't have a lot of congestion and traffic that day. So...
Love it. Sounds great.
I just want to add, it's so beautiful to see so much hard work that's been put into it by so many people for a number of years now to get us from where we started to now having this fully open building with students starting to attend shortly. It's just a really exciting culmination. The building is spectacular. Bert Gardner is often times in these meetings and talking about that. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but definitely kudos out to him and all of the teams that have been a part of the actual construction, getting it done on time and under budget. So those are all wonderful things. And I just think it really needs to... The community needs to know and see how wonderful the results that we were able to achieve. So it's just really super exciting.
Yeah.
And Maren, I'd like to thank you and the rest of the building committee for putting in so many hours into making it such a phenomenal building. So thank you all.
You're welcome. Very exciting.
Time well spent. I can tell you, time well spent.
Yes, many people involved. The one question I have, Dr. Leclerc, if you could just add to it, I know I've heard it definitely had a number of people ask about it, is just trying to understand the transportation piece. And I don't know, forget if we're talking about that later or if you wanted to touch base on it now about the school, just about how the calculations are done and how people can know whether or not they're included or not included. There's just, with a new building, with new transportation, there's always questions and trying to understand. So, and also the understanding that, you know, as we've talked about from a financial perspective, transportation is huge. We've had to add quite a number of buses to our whole district to be driving around our city to be able to get our students there, and they are quite packed. And so we don't have a lot of extra room. In past years, sometimes we've been able to add seats on after it starts in. It's much less likely that's gonna happen this year, but maybe you could speak to that now or whenever we're able to talk about it.
Sure. And Mr. Burnier might want to jump in as he's more, I think, hands-on with the transportation than I am. You know, our transportation policy is the same as it has been. I think to your point, when we moved from the neighborhood schools to the Mountain View school, now more families qualify to ride the bus. So we did expand our bus services quite a bit. We went from seven buses to 12, and we more than doubled our ridership. So we have a lot of students wanting to access the bus and a lot of families that, for various reasons, childcare issues, all kinds of things, are looking to get onto the bus. And so we're very limited. You know, the buses at the elementary level are filled right now. And we will do the process that we have done in past years, the fill-the-bus process, where we drop the mileage down if we're able to, once school gets underway for a few weeks. But I think that families, you know, if they can work with us, it's very helpful. And so we often find we can do the fill-the-bus option because families that may qualify for transportation may choose to drive their children to school. And if they're driving their children to school, we may not know that because we've assigned them a seat on the bus. So that seat on the bus is theirs right now. So if parents are going to be driving their children to school for whatever reason, they bring them, you know, early for champions or something, then please let us know so that we can open up a seat for someone else. But again, pivoting to Lori's point, we also encourage families to think about walking, bike riding, and alternatives to our buses and our... about walking, bike riding, and alternatives to our buses and our cars. You know, I can't tell you the number of families that live right on Park Street that email me all the time, can we get, can we get transportation for our child, so they don't have to walk? Can you put a stop here? I mean, we have to have some, some guideposts to help us navigate, you know, what we are able to do in a responsible manner. So, you know, we are, we are challenged. Transportation is and always has been a challenge in this community. I think if most families could choose to put their child on a bus, they would. And we just don't have the funding for that. We just simply don't. I will tell you, and I've said this in previous years, the transportation company does the, the bus distance for families, and they may not be perfect. So if a family gets alerted that, okay, they don't qualify for transportation, but they're curious about it, if they email my office, which many of them have done, I say, well, we'll have the safety officer go out and check the route. And so we've done that, that's one of the police officers. And if it, if it's not correct with what, if it doesn't jive with what the transportation company came up with, then we will try to get that family on the bus. You know, they're, the transportation company, I don't know the brand of software they use or, you know, how current it is, but I'm sure that errors come up. So Nick, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I don't really have a lot to add. I think you explained it very well. I can tell you Durham uses VersaTrans software to determine their route length. You know, how accurate that is, is, you know, again, there, there could be discrepancies from time to time, which is why Dr. Leclerc has worked with our resource officers in the past to, you know, see if the, the route was actually what the transportation company said it was. I can also say that Maria Laskowski here in the business office has worked tirelessly all summer on, on transportation. Bus pass applications were due a few weeks ago, and she's been processing that for, you know, families who don't qualify for transportation for, for free, but, you know, would pay for a bus pass. As Dr. Leclerc said, space is very limited. We don't know how much fill-the-bus passes we can, you know, we'll be able to sell this year, and, you know, we won't know that for, for a little bit of time, because when you do your bus routes, you have to account for every child that, that could use the bus, whether the family chooses to or not. You have to account for them and assume that they all will, before you open up seats for, for other students. So Maria's been here many hours past, you know, when, when she should be getting this all ready to go. And I've had many families come in this week to pick up the, the bus passes that, that it purchased.
Beautiful. I love it. I love it.
So Nicole, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you.
Are you not able to do that anymore? Is that something we lost?
No, no, I should be able to do that. I just, well, I'll give it a shot. If it hadn't been, good.
I noticed it on what?
Can I ask one other follow-up question again, just because it's just, you know, we have a long driveway to our building, and I just wanted to, for people to understand that are watching this recording, when they are doing the, the school is doing the calculation, I mean, the school bus company is doing the calculation first, and when we're doing a follow-up calculation, if requested, does that calculation go, obviously it's by the streets, it's not pro and all that kind of stuff, but does it just go to the streets and go to the top of the roundabout? Or does it go all the way down to where the bus would drop off the student? If you could just, if one of you could clarify that calculation, just because people have asked?
I'm not sure, Nick, do you know?
I have no idea. That is a very good question, and I will, I'll make it a priority to find out the answer. I, I don't know, but I, I can know tomorrow, and I can, I can send you an email, Maren, if you would.
If you could, and then maybe post it on our Facebook. I just know that that's definitely, that, how to do that calculation is one of the questions that comes up right now a lot by parents, as they're trying to figure this out. And so if we could post it on our Facebook as well, so that people understand exactly how the school bus and thereby we are also doing those calculations would be really helpful, as they're trying to make their plans. And again, I completely agree, you know, walking bus, you know, walking through the woods if you can, if you're close that way, bike riding, there's lots of ways to get your students to our schools, carpooling, if you can do that, is what is, whatever we can do as a community to sort of minimize the impact and allow those bus riders for the people who really have absolutely no other choice, will make this work better for our entire community. So please let us know as a community, let our superintendent know if you're not going to be needing your seat. And again, look for alternative ways, look for grouping together, things like that, to make this as minimal impact as possible. Thank you.
Great idea. Great idea. Laurie?
This is a, a great time to talk about what is also going on. So this summer, I met with a whole committee with Lucy Friedman-Bell and the police department, and the police department is, who is in charge of the crossing guards. And we worked this summer during meetings to make sure that the crossing guards that were hired previously to be at all of the elementary schools could still be used with our new Mountain View school. So we already have seven crossing guards secured, and we talked with the police department. I'm very thankful for their input. And Cynthia Perry was involved from the police department, and we examined with a mass department of transportation where the best placement for crossing guards would be, to access Mountain View. So I would like to let you know that there is a walking route map that is being put together now. It's carefully put together, including the crossing guard locations, and that will be distributed to the community. I asked if it was going to be distributed by tonight, and I didn't receive an answer, but it, I have seen the draft of it, and we can put it on our website as well as get copies. So that should enable families to feel more secure how to get to the school without using cars or buses. And if anyone has particular questions or concerns about access to the bike path or walking routes, please feel free to email me, because I am on that committee.
Laurie, when did you say it was coming up?
So I've seen the draft, and I did write to Jeff Bag, who's also involved with this, and Lucy, I wrote to them last week, and I said, we're meeting, you know, I told them the meeting was postponed, and please let me know when I can get this to the community. Unfortunately, I didn't get that answer back, and I have my start of school too, so I couldn't follow up with them today. But we'll get it on the district website, because as I said, I saw the draft, but they were waiting to coordinate everything, including all of the exact locations of the crossing guards. And crossing guards will be used at the access point, also going down into Mountain View school, so it will be very safe.
Awesome.
Megan, you have a question?
Yeah, just was gonna say that I've also heard, so Ben and I have been taking turns sort of attending the kindergarten and first grade and second grade playdates, just to kind of, you know, our, our kids are in the, those ages, those age ranges, and we're, we're hearing parents talk about this transportation business. And I think it would be really neat if, when we have that walking map ready, I don't know if it can be like a comment section nearby where parents could post like groups that are walking, but I've heard already that there's a couple of like groups coming from various locations, like one, I think Ben probably is about to jump in and say, he knows better.
No, no, yeah, there was at least one cohort of parents who are trying to get together to, to do the non-tock path, at least a couple of times a week, if not, right, more. But yeah, that's in the works for sure. It would be cool to get the word out, because I think a lot of people would like to maintain that walking experience.
So could you please have them get in touch with me, or you guys let me know, so we can coordinate this all? Because one of the goals is also to have, you know, the walking school bus type of situation with parent volunteers. So these are things that we bring up, and we bring this up in these meetings all the time. So let's coordinate.
That sounds great. I know we're going to have one from Button Road, that's a really long commute, but, you know, there will be walking school bus from Button Road. I have a few more questions about the busing stuff. Is this, anyone else have anything about the walking?
I think it's all part of our, our month update.
So is this a good time to ask about the childcare busing? Yeah, so the, the kids who are dropped off there, regardless of where their homes are, they have no way to get to the school other than by transportation, or to or from, right? What, what is the?
Are you talking about Young World and?
Young World and Our Lady, I believe, are the two that emailed us.
Yeah, and we're providing transportation to both of those groups.
Okay. Great. Is that sort of the standard going forward, the plan? Okay, it'll be sort of year to year, or?
I think, well, it's the standard as far as those of the, to my knowledge, and please correct me if I'm wrong, those are the largest childcare centers that, that collect our children. So we wanted to work with those two facilities, because we've had a longstanding partnership with them. It's not something that I feel we can do for every daycare situation that arises. You know, it just, I, I don't think, we don't have the ability to do that. So for those two larger organizations, we said that we would do it, but I can't do it for every daycare.
That makes sense. I just, just wanted the clarity on sort of what was decided there. And then I wanted to follow up, there was a, I think you, I can't remember who said, there were some families that are like on Park Street that are technically, not technically, that are within the, the radius, but perhaps like, I can imagine if I'm living on Park Street, I might not want my younger children walking along that. Are there like, is part of that bus pass approval you talked about, like exceptions for families who live on busy roads? Is that part of this, or is that really just a distance equation?
It's a, really a distance equation.
Until the fill-the-bus?
So I think it's going to take this whole year to really get a sense of where our difficulties are in terms of transportation. I think that, you know, it's so unusual going from, you know, three schools to one. They were just not going to get a, a sense of exactly what we need and what we can do. But I certainly think we'll be talking about it all year long, to be creative and try to come up with solutions that, you know, will accommodate as many people as we can. We'll know a lot more as we go along. So. Anything else? All right.
I do have one more thing. Sorry. One more thing that I wanted to say.
So you go ahead.
I was just gonna say about, I think it's a good transition about the air quality stuff. Thank you for that slide, and hopefully that will get widely shared. It really is, I just want to echo that this is like, really all you can hope for in a inside location for air quality. My official epidemiology stamp of like think-goodness is, is on this building, so that's great. There was a visual I made a few weeks ago that I think prompted some of these questions, sort of moving like from top to bottom, least expensive to most expensive, and then left to right, like lower intervention, higher intervention, sort of air quality, how to get to the, like, the bottom corner is like the best air quality. And that was these MERV 13 and higher filters and the UV germicidal filtration and purifying. So this is, it's just really, I just wanted to add in secondary reassurance, it's really great air quality.
Thank you.
Do you want to go on with our COVID update?
Sure. So really, we have not dwelled on this too much this summer. You know, we received updated guidance from CDC at the beginning of August. We received updated guidance subsequently after that from MassDPH. We're trying to stay in the world of, you know, information. I met with our city health department and ran through some of the things that we were thinking. And so our guidance, really our protocols, will just be to mirror the CDC and DPH. And that, for anyone listening, that is a reminder that if you have a certain set of symptoms, you should stay home, whether it's from school or from work, you should stay home if you have COVID-like symptoms. Oh, I should start by saying that we do not require masks or face coverings, but we will have them available, should anyone want them. And it's an environment in which, if people want to wear masks, students, adults, they're welcome to wear masks. There's no, there's no pressure to conform either way. We want people to make that personal choice based on what's right for them. So we will have masks, high-quality masks, available. Visitors will be welcome into our schools, as was the practice. Now, a lot of this hasn't changed from last spring, this is just kind of a reminder. Visitors are welcome, however, we will still have the option, and we'll encourage families that want to have Zoom or Teams meetings to do that, to make it easier on everyone. We're following the recommendations for isolation, asked after a positive COVID test, you should isolate or stay home for the first five days, either the first five days after the date of a positive test, or the first day of symptoms, whichever is earlier. And on days six through 10, you can return to school, and we ask that you wear a mask when you return. We are not doing contact tracing, we are not doing surveillance testing, we are not doing test and stay in our schools. We will do asymptomatic testing while we still have some free kits available to us. So for as long as that goes on, what that means is, if a child is not feeling well at school and goes to the nurse's office, the nurse might call mom or dad and say, we have a COVID test here, would you like us to administer it? And once they get the parent's permission, they could do that. If the parent doesn't want them to, they can pick their child up. So we're really trying to follow the recommendations of the CDC and DPH, and that's where we are right now.
Any comments? Anything anybody wants to say, Ben?
I'm, I'm just wondering about, there was, there was occasionally issues last year with people who had to miss a lot of school. Five days can happen, or potentially more, depending on how the, the kid might be feeling. But I was just wondering about like attendance policies and that kind of thing, like, are we still in like, I don't, I can't remember if, if we have like a pandemic policy or not, but.
Yeah, no, no, we're not. So actually, in the guidance that the Department of, Department of Education put out in August, we're going back to normal attendance policies. Students do not have to, so what, what's different this year is students do not have to be home for 10 days, if they're sick, five days. And what's also different this year, there's two other things that are different. In the past, if you were exposed and you were unvaccinated, you would have to stay at home for a period of days. That, that is no longer required. And that also aligns with last year and previous years, if, Ben, if you got COVID and your sibling was in fifth grade, they might have also had to stay home. So, you know, it, it put a burden on families as far as attendance, because, you know, by the time it was all said and done, people might need to be home for, you know, 15, 20 days. I think Megan can relate to this from last year when she went through it. But those restrictions are no longer in place. So it is, it is five days for COVID, unless you still stick, obviously, but that's up to families. We will not be doing remote learning for students that are at home. We do have some ability, going back to, I don't want to say the pre-COVID, but we do have some ability for students to get work at home. And that might be in the form of Google Classroom, it might be electronically, but there is the ability for students to do work. It might be elec- electronically, but there is the ability for students to do work at home. Just like if they were home with the flu or strep throat or something like that. Um, so that they can keep up with their schoolwork if they're feeling well enough. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the work part of it, I think the teachers can work that out. Um, I'm just more concerned with like potential punitive measures that might come from excessive absences. I know that that is a problem in different, you know, settings, but, um, I want to make sure that if people are sick and, you know, struggling, if families get sick or whatever it is and kids can't come to school, that they're not being, you know, sent home. The, I've heard about these letters that are pretty mean-spirited or something. And I want to make sure that, uh, you know.
There's a process before you get to the letter, Ben.
Right, right. But I just want to make sure that the families are, you know, we're like, okay, this is not just some kind of like, you know, a, a family being irresponsible, that there's actually some stuff going on that's legit.
Yeah. Yep. There are actually different mechanisms in place. Um, if a student is hospitalized, we have the ability to waive certain restrictions. So there are things that come into play that are kind of, you know, operating behind the scenes.
And excused absences because you're sick are very routine in school. Um, it's different from, I didn't come to school because I didn't feel like coming and I'm sick. Those days where you're legitimately sick are excused absences. So, okay. Megan?
Um, so I, I feel totally comfortable with all of the, um, rules and procedures that are going to be followed this year with the exception of just some clarification around this day six through 10 business. And this is not, again, as I've said so many times, like not an East Hampton thing. This is like the math, you know, the state and CDC guidance. Like we know that folks are still infectious between days six to 10, like no question. Um, so is there any, I mean, really the guidance is that they, if you're back after day five and day six through 10, you need to be wearing, uh, like a KF ninety-four, KF ninety-five or KN ninety-five or N ninety-five mask. But we don't have any way of knowing which students were out with COVID or our families reporting COVID cases.
We're asking families in our, in our document, um, where, that we're sharing out with our staff. And it will go out to families in the news, their newsletter. Um, we're asking that they report COVID cases to the building nurse and the building nurse will monitor the timelines for return.
Um, and so then the last sort of question, that's great. I think that's going to be huge to really make sure that students are wearing their mask through day 10. And some will still be infectious past day 10, but very, you know, that's sort of diminishing, um, infectiousness. So that's, that's great. The question I have now for you is about lunch. Um, it does no good to mask continuously day six through 10 while you're infectious, but then go take your mask off and eat in the lunchroom. Is there another place that students who are in this day six through, six through 10 can eat?
I can confer with the building principals. I know that, and, and Mr. Evans is on, um, the Zoom tonight. In both buildings, there are opportunities to eat outside. And many of our students take advantage of those opportunities. That won't address the question that you raised in the winter. But for the beginning of the school year, we can probably work with the nurse to encourage those students to eat outside at the very least. Um, and, and those tables are, are pretty much spread out.
I think outdoor eating is a great solution for it. I don't think you need a separate outdoor space. If that can be like the, the rule, I mean, I know in the winter it would be like a cold couple of days.
We wouldn't put children outside.
Yeah. So then maybe, I don't know, if we can have them, e- even like the nurse's office and one of the isolation rooms or something. I don't know how many cases we'll have in that time period, anyone's time, if it'll be a big group or not, but.
Yeah, I would just say, um, at the high school, certainly outside is an option. We have tables outside in front of the back and when the weather is appropriate for that. If it's not, uh, we do have some alternative spaces that, um, students that are on mass protocols can, can eat. Um, there's a a little room right off the cafeteria in high school, so we do have some options.
And it would be the same at the elementary. It's just supervised, yeah.
You're going to have those places for sure. Because I do agree with Megan, that's going to be an issue. Um, I'm hoping that numbers stay really low in the schools, that, that families and kids, um, stay, um, healthy. But we're going to have to prepare for kids coming back on that day six through 10. And, um, as long as we're planning for places for them to have some space.
There are guaranteed outdoor spaces with picnic tables right now at the, at the elementary and middle school side of Mountain View that can be accessed as of day one. The picnic tables are there. They're.
Right, but what will we do? But what will we do later?
Poor weather, there's the nurse's room, which is right off of the cafeteria, does have an isolation room. There's also right off the cafeteria is one of the administrative spaces. There's a large conference room there with a large table. Students can eat there. There are multiple spaces
Excellent.
in the building.
Excellent.
That could be supervised.
I know the nurses have a lot to do, but, um, I'm imagining like my third grader would definitely need reminders that he is in mask protocol and needs to eat outdoors or in the conference room. Thank you. That sounds like a really good plan.
Okay, good. And it did, um, it did pass through, um, the city health department, as I said, and they had no issues with it either. And the next piece is Mr. Evans. I'm going to switch over to Mr. Evans. And I think that probably this committee, I, I won't steal all his thunder, but I think this committee has probably seen in the local and state, um, news recently, policies around cell phones at the high school level and trying to tighten things up. Um, so it's been something that has been on Mr. Evans radar for probably the past year. And so he's at a place where he'd like to make some, um, adjustments to the um, student handbook. So he wanted to present them to you this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. Um, so yes, the, the changes that, um, going into the handbook are procedural in nature. Um, but I, I want to make sure that, um, the community gets a chance to understand what they are and why we put them in place. So there's two significant, um, pieces that we, we've changed. Uh, one is with regard to the amount of time that a student, um, can spend out of class without being marked absent. So some background, um, in the past, our handbook stated that students could be out of class. This is an eighty-four minute class, right? Cause we have block, block scheduling for fifteen minutes. Fifteen, one five before they are marked absent from that class. Uh, what we found, uh, last year, um, is that, um, students might, uh, go to the bathroom or take a walking break or whatever, but they would often say, well, I've got, you know, I've, I've been out for fourteen minutes, so I've got fifty-nine seconds left. Um, and it felt like there was a, a lot of, um, not just using the policy as it was intended in terms of providing what we thought was reasonable and compassionate. Uh, opportunity for students to be out of class, but, but really like taking advantage of the system and, um, and students were missing class much more than, than we felt that we were comfortable with or that was good for them in terms of their educational progress. Many students exceeded the fifteen minutes. And so they were getting marked absent from class. So what, one of the changes in the handbook and, and our procedures this year is to change that to ten minutes from fifteen to ten. Um, and the reason really is to, is, is part of a larger focus this year on returning to a culture of learning in the building where, um, post-pandemic, um, last year, coming back from isolation, students were really struggling with that, but we feel like this is our opportunity this year to sort of reset some norms about, um, about class attendance. And many students had, um, suffered academically from not being in class significant, uh, for, for sufficient amount of time. So the first change, which is outlined in the three bullet points, I assume that many of you have seen the document that are forwarded, um, are strictly about changing that fifteen-minute rule to a ten-minute.
Can we put that up?
Oh, um, if you give me an opportunity, I'll see if I can share.
You should be able to share.
And, yeah. So here are these first three bullet points. The things that are in red are actually the actual changes in the handbook language. Um, so in, on page forty-four, we added this language. A student is considered absent from class when they're out of class for more than ten minutes without authorization from a militant building. And on page forty-six, we just changed the fifteen to ten. And then the definition of cutting class, we added this language so that people were clear about that, defined as missing more than half of a class without authorization. So just to clarify that point, obviously, half a class is much more than ten minutes. So ten-minute is about attendance, is about being marked absent from class. And as, um, as you're aware, uh, students have, can lose credit if they accrue more than nine absences in a class. So being marked absent works toward their, uh, attendance. But cutting a class is a different, um, discipline procedure. So we just wanted to clearly define what is cutting a class versus what is simply an attendance violation. But that's what that, that third block is, that third bullet is. The second major, uh, change in the handbook regards, as Dr. Leclerc mentioned, um, is with regard to electronic devices, um, particularly cell phones. So, yes, as many of us understand, uh, last year, um, during the post-pandemic, post-isolation year, um, cell phones were significantly, saw cellphone, uh, use increase significantly in the building as, as many, many schools did across the country, across the world probably. Um, so, um, what we did was alter some of our po- our, our procedures in responding to that. Uh, and again, those things are highlighted and read there. So, um, everything that's in black is consistent with what we've had in the handbook prior. Um, in number five, we have added that cellphone breaks will be permitted at the teacher's discretion. So during the pandemic, we found, we, we instituted mask breaks as a mandated part of classes. Um, and when we came back last year, um, we provided, teachers were able to provide breaks at their discretion. And many teachers found, right, as students were really adjusting to being back in school, that in an eighty-four minute block, having a break in the middle of it was important. So, um, this indicates that having a break that allows the students to use their cellphone during that time will be allowed during teacher's discretion. So it's just being explicit about that particular component. Number six is a new, um, part of the, of the procedure. It says if a student uses a cellphone during class time, they would be required to place the cellphone in a designated area. And refusal to do so results in the student being sent to the main office for, for progressive discipline. So we provided every teacher in the building with a, a set of pouches, right, that hang from a wall. Um, when this started, it was shoe trees that, that teachers were, um, were, were getting because they're creative. Um, but now of course people, companies make these, uh, cellphone pouches. So they get a set of like thirty pouches that they can hang on their wall. And if a student brings out their cellphone during the lesson, during an unauthorized time, that, um, their request will be to put the cellphone in the pouch. And that's all. There's no discipline involved. It's just put it in the pouch until the end of the class and then you can have it back. No being sent to the office, no, no, uh, parent contact, but simply, hey, take your cellphone out, put it over here until the end of class. If the student refuses to do that, well, now they've upped it to a different level. And so in number six, um, it says if the student refuses to do so, they'll be sent to the office for progressive, progressive discipline. Below that, in the consequences area, it, uh, outlines exactly what that progressive discipline will be. So first offense is a warning, um, some restorative process as in a reflection sheet that allows the student to talk about, think about and write about the choices they made and how they, why they made those choices. And it launches a conversation for us with the student. In the second offense, they will still do that restorative process, but there will also be a thirty-minute after-school detention. Oh, excuse me. And the first offense, the parent or caregiver is notified. So there's a call home on the first offense. The second offense, by the way, this is cumulative. So if a student has, uh, refuses to, uh, put their cellphone in the pouch during A block on Monday, and then they do that again during B block on Tuesday, we will be tracking all of those offenses in the main office. And so the second one, the B block on Tuesday, is considered their second offense. So it's not by teacher, it's cumulative. So in the second offense, they receive a thirty-minute detention, um, as well as a restorative process to talk about, think about what their decisions that they're making around their cellphone. And again, there's a phone call home and the parent or caregiver is notified. On the third offense, the student receives a sixty-minute detention, restorative process, and again, another phone call home. So many of us are parents. There is a point where I've received three phone calls home about your cellphone use. This is probably going to have an impact at home. And we're hoping really that our parents are our main partners in, uh, in helping students maintain, uh, their cellphone use habits. Uh, after the third offense, we're now bringing parent or caregivers into the building. We're sitting down with them, we're talking with them, the student. We're talking about this problem, why it's a problem. We're really trying to get underneath it all. We are trying to come up with different solutions such as maybe the cellphone stays home. Maybe the cellphone stays in the office all day. Um, so at that point, you know, it's a much larger conversation. Throughout all of this, it's not part of the handbook changes, but I do want to point out that throughout all of this, there is opportunities for support for students, opportunities for students to, um, self-regulate. Um, opportunities for students to reach out and to say, hey, I think I'm going to need help with this. So that, um, as I've said to the students, as I will be saying to the students, um, this is a collaborative process between adults and the students. It can be collaborative or it can be a confrontation. And, and it mostly is going to be a decision that's made by the student. And again, we're at the high school level, so that's helpful to give them those choices and to, and to provide them with that autonomy. But really the primary choice will be when they make the mistake of bringing their phone out during instructional time and they're asked to put it in the pouch. Do they go ahead and put it in the pouch? Or they decide at that time, this is going to be a discipline process. And that decision, they get to make that in that moment. I can separate from my phone for the next twenty-five, thirty-five, you know, fifty, fifty minutes, however many much time is left in the class and avoid all of that. Or I can choose to engage in the discipline process by refusing to do. So again, you know, again, in, in high school autonomy and decision-making is a big part of what students were trying to teach them to make responsible decisions because they now feel like they, they should make all the decisions for themselves. Um, so they get some, some autonomy and some agency there, but we're also saying they're structured and there are clear, consistent and, um, and predictable consequences for their actions. So those are the two primary areas of change in the handbook that's coming here, and I'm happy to entertain. Any questions?
So I have a number of questions. Um, so the first one, you're cutting, um, from fifteen to ten minutes, and I totally understand that. Missing instructional time is really crucial. But I have a question. There are often students who, for one reason or another, have, um, a intermittent, uh, digestive issue and will take longer than that ten minutes. And since that would count as an absence, that would be very detrimental to a student who is just going to have that happen every once in a while. So is, a- and I'm not saying it shouldn't be part, it's got to be part of the handbook, but is there going to be the policy where? this is not automatic, for instance, perhaps the first time, or if it's something that happens infrequently, you're not going to have that absence?
So, so I appreciate that you raised that question soon because there are a number of, uh, different, uh, exceptions to that ten-minute rule. For instance, a student might have a five oh four that requires frequent breaks or an IP that requires frequent breaks. A student might have a health condition that requires them to be out longer than ten minutes in that eighty-four minute block. All of those things are absolutely accepted, provided that we have some adult mandor documentation to say, yes, this is a, this is a real thing. It's not just a student saying, yeah, but you gotta let me because I need longer. There's got to be, you know, some confirmation from an adult at home or the nurse or, uh, an outside provider that says, yes, this is a, a serious thing that needs to be considered. Or it's part of their five oh four or it's part of their IP. And absolutely all of those are exceptions that we will absolutely consider. And we went over those, uh, today with the staff.
Right, but those are five oh fours, special ed, medical exemptions. What I'm asking is, um, that student who has something that is going to happen once in a, you know, once in a while, um, are they simply going to lose attendance for that class?
So I think.
That's a legitimate reason to go beyond that ten minutes.
So, so as you know, as as a teacher, right, so teachers have to make these kinds of judgments all the time about when a student says, hey, you know what, this is going on for me, right? Um, and we trust our teachers to make, uh, reasonable and appropriate decisions around those situations. And I think they do a very good job with that. Um, if a student leaves for ten minutes for for a bathroom break and they come back fifteen minutes later, and the conversation out in the hall or on the side is, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm going to have to mark you absent. If the student says, oh, well, or why, or nothing, you know, like they don't offer something in return, then that's that very different from, I'm really sorry, but I had something going on. And then there can be a phone call home, there can be a further conversation. The teachers, you know, we trust them to make their judgments around these things. And we, we did, uh, actually, we talked about that in our professional development today, and this very question came up. And this very, you know, um, response and conversation with the staff about making good judgments um, with with kids in 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 specific situations. That's what we do all the time and what you do. So I appreciate the question, but yes.
It is, it is what we do, but it's also helpful when administration says, hey, you are capable of making that call. And just because it's in the handbook does not mean that, you know, you can't have forgiveness for certain events that happen with kids.
Sure.
So the other is the cellphone issue. I know for some parents, they love having their, their, um, kids have their cellphones with them at all time. But I can say as a teacher that the last year where we were not as strict with cellphones, um, because we were trying to do all this healing with students, cellphones really played havoc with kids' education. So I love the idea of, um, telling kids, you know, you're not going to use that cellphone. Yes, if the teacher's saying, let's get our cellphones out, we're all going to look at a particular thing, that's very different than, um, kids being on during class time. And I, I think it is, it is definitely time to put into the handbook some avenues for saying enough is enough, put your cellphone away, you're here for learning. And I liked the step-by-step, um, offenses. You know, first time is the warning. I really liked how how it's laid out. So that that was, um, I, I like it. Lori?
I would like to echo Cindy's comments and, um, compliment you, Bill, and your, you and your staff for a very thoughtful cellphone policy. I wish that my high school where I teach had such an extensive, well-thought-out policy. So I think I may copy it and bring it to the administration there. So thank you so very much for that.
I really appreciate that, Lori. And again, always hearing from other educators is really important and and is more meaningful. Um, I do want to point out that, um, this didn't just come about because I typed it out. Um, we had as a group of four teachers come in over the summer and do a series of, um, uh, meetings together to hammer this out. Um, Ms. Paisak, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Carr, and Ms. McDonald, um, met with myself and mostly met with each other. You know, with me just saying, go ahead and do this, uh, and hammer this out together. And, um, and so it was, it was a group effort, and I really appreciate their, uh, their input. And thank you for that feedback. Appreciate it.
Well, you're very welcome, and I thank all of them. And I can really see that it's so well thought out and it's progressive discipline with, um, learning in mind. And, um, thank you for telling me that they actually have pouches because for the first time ever, I actually just purchased on Amazon a shoe pouch. I've never collected them before, but I figure from day one, if I do, then it's just going to set the bar at a certain place. I don't like having cellphones in my drawer or on my desk. So I wish I had known that they have special pouches before I ordered the shoe pouch.
So you know, I have the shoe.
And there's an opportunity.
I have the shoe pouch in my room, like you did, Lori, but it works. So, um, Ben, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think this is a, uh, this is the the right path for sure. I'm just curious, um, to what degree students are made very clear about this policy from from day one, like, do they, are they given this sheet? Or they, I know they have a handbook, but I mean, I almost feel like they need to be, you know, the pages need to be turned and they need to look at this exact policy and understand it for themselves and not just have it top-down, you know, discipline situations. Um, I, I would really like to, to give students the chance to kind of, I mean, I know you're not going to collaborate around a policy with students necessarily, but it would be really good to let them sort of understand what's going on, uh, or to, or for you all to understand what they think about this policy. And so that it's a kind of exchange and a conversation as much as it is a kind of, you know, you didn't do this, so you, this is what the the consequence is, you know, and then you're like, I'm getting away from that punitive. I know there's a restorative element to it, but there's still a punitive thing going on.
There's actually, yeah. So I appreciate the question, Ben. I don't mean to catch up, but, uh, but there's a, a number of different communications that have gone out, and they include, um, some other things that are not, you know, part of the of the procedure here. So, um, so first of all, parents were, and students, um, got an email about a week and a half ago, um, that explained all of this, but not just like, here's the new procedure. It really talked about what we're trying to do proactively as well as reactively. And the proactive piece is really the important part. So the message here is that cellphones are going to be an integral part of students' lives forever. How many of us have looked at our cellphone during this meeting? Um, and for good reasons, right? Not just because we're, we're scrolling, you know, TikTok, but because we use them as real important tools all the time. They're not going away. So the message to the families and to the students is we understand that this is an integral part of your life, yet overuse of it becomes an obstacle to you being able to achieve your educational goals, your professional goals, your personal goals, whatever it is. Overuse is a, is a, is an issue that we all need to understand and take control. So the email that went out to parents said, look, we understand. This is not going away. We're working with you and we're working with your student. Here are some proactive measures. So on, on day one, when students come into the building on Thursday, the first activity that they engage, or the first class is next, is an extended advisory class, both for the ninth grade who come in regular time and the ten through twelve will come in in delayed time. And there will be a presentation that I put together, a screencastified, um, that explains what the procedures are, but more importantly explains, here are ways that you can help yourself. We have a series of of interventions that students can take on their own that say, you know, here's some things you can do to improve your relationship with your cellphone in a way that brings it to the healthy side versus the unhealthy side. And those procedures are not only emailed to students, they're also printed, will be printed and put in all the classrooms and made available in hard copy. And eventually, once my graphic arts teacher gets to it, made into larger posters so that we can put them around the building. So there is a going to be a large emphasis on proactive and students really taking control of this on their own. In addition, it's also, my phrase is, let's be collaborators, collaboration instead of confrontation. Right? So you can choose to have this be a confrontation, where you can choose to collaborate with us and say upfront, and there'll be a, a, a survey that students can take, quick Google form that says, okay, so how do you think you're going to respond to this? How easy, how difficult will it be for you to comply with this? And they can choose, it's really not a problem, or, yeah, this is going to be a significant problem for me. And if they choose that, then we can bring them in and start having that conversation with them, having them meet with a counselor, giving them proactive tools so that they can start managing this. But it gives them an opportunity to say, yeah, I think this is going to be a problem for me. And we can start that conversation collaboratively instead of waiting for it to be a confrontation. So all of these, like, all of the rollout is about, let's work on this together, both with the families and with the students. So I, I, I hope that answers your question, Ben. Um, but I, I, I do want to point out that what you're seeing in the handbook is only a small portion of what we're talking to the students about and what we're talking to families about.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, and I know Maren and Megan haven't spoken yet. I just wanted to say my experience with doing this is very positive. If you explain to students, we really need your cellphone away, period. And if you're having a hard time, um, keeping it away, then here's the pouch that we can put your phone in and you'll have some distance, but you're going to see the difference. But I think our students are having a hard time, um, they need help restricting themselves from this, this cellphone. It's become, for some students, a real addiction. And it, and their mind just shuts down. They feel even that buzz in, in their side pocket. And they can no longer think and listen because they're, they're really wondering, um, uh, what that, what that message is. So the fact that a lot of, a lot of my students had just chosen to put the phone away first so that they don't feel that, that anxiety and that interruption. So I just wanted to weigh in because I've used this, um, and I've seen it make a huge difference. So Maren, you wanted to say something, and Megan, may, uh, Maren first?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, so first off, thank you, Principal Evans. I do think this is an important topic to be engaging, uh, for our students' youth, uh, for their education and focus. Um, and I'm really happy to hear that there was a group of teachers that came in and worked on this. Um, I think it, part of the collaboration, though, piece, and maybe too late for this probably at this point, but the collaboration piece that I think that I would recommend for something this significant in the future might have been to engage, um, some of maybe the student council or some of the student representatives as a part of that conversation, as a part of creating this policy. Um, having them, you know, you're talking a lot about collaboration, but it's after the fact, it's already built. Um, and I think that if we had had, uh, I don't know if anything would change, right? But I think that having that collaboration and engagement from the start would have been, um, they, they might have thought of additional ideas or different ways to manage that process that might have been more, um, more collaborative from the start. So I, the, I don't know if you have a ability to run it by anybody or get any last minute feedback before it actually gets rolled out, but um, that would be a strong recommendation that I could make to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Maren, and I think that's, those are excellent points. Um, I think that, you know, when we were, um, when we got to the end of the year, like, so creating policy in a school is, uh, is, is kind of difficult, right? Creating policy changes or procedural changes, um, because you've got a certain amount of time. And then, but that time is always occupied by class. And then the summer happens and then everybody disperses. And so if you're going to bring people in, you're going to pay them or ask them to volunteer. So it's, that's this on the adult side, but it's also true on the student side, right? So could we have had students be part of that process? Yes, my, my hope is to have students engage in a, um, workshop where we collectively identify the norms around student cellphone use. So one piece that I feel is still missing, right, from a procedural point of view, is to have a school-wide set of norms. Like you have norms for meetings and you have norms for classrooms. Well, what are our norms around cellphones, right? So they could be used when you're doing a cahoot or when you're doing, uh, an experiment in, in science class and you need the camera or the timer or the, or the stopwatch or something. There are lots of good reasons to use cellphones in classes. So let's define what those are. Let's also define what can be, what should be saved for breaks and times when the kid, and what are, what are the things that are completely off limits, right? Like taking pictures of kids without their consent and sharing them, those kinds of things that students, choices that students make sometimes because they're adolescents and they don't always demonstrate good judgment. Um, let's help, let's get the students to define what those things are and then display them everywhere in the school. These are, are the norms that, so yes, I agree with you, it probably would have been felt more inclusive to bring parents and students into the, uh, into the process and developing this. There was a sense of urgency. There was a sense of, we need to get this done in a short amount of time. Um, so could have been better. Um, but we do hope to get student input as we move forward with at least the norms process.
And that actually speaks to the second point that I just wanted to say. I think one of the things that also, um, students, uh, teenagers are working with is the concept of fairness, right? Um, and fairness is one of those very loose terms. Um, but it does speak to what you're talking about. What are the norms? Um, and I think the important piece there is that the norms have to fit for our teachers as well because they're, the students are going to be seeing those norms, uh, in terms of what their parents use in terms of the cellphone, what their peers are using it, um, and what the teachers and community is using it. So I do think that while we can't, uh, affect sort of the, the norms across the entire community, um, and that fairness that may be brought up, uh, when it comes to that piece of that conversation, but at least having that conversation about normatives, I think we'll get to some of those issues uh, and hopefully be able to move the conversation forward and they're learning about how to use it better. We all need to learn how to use it better. It's, it is a really, uh, a challenging issue that all of us are working on, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think the ultimate goal is to provide students with tools so that they can manage their cellphone use into the future, right? Not just in high school, but beyond that, in a way that's healthy and productive. Um, and yes, high school students have an acute sense of fairness. Truly, and they all have their own definition of what it is, but.
Megan?
Um, this is great. I love to see this stuff. Um, I just had one question for you as I was looking through, um, the updates that are getting made. Um, I was just curious if you could give us some background on this. There was one addition where it was going to be, um, teacher discretion for cellphone breaks. Um, I'm curious, I mean, it sounds like that comes from sort of a grassroots of like teachers themselves. I'm imagining in my classrooms, like if some teachers are doing cellphone breaks and I'm not, you know, that might make me the bad guy because I don't want to do it. And I don't know, I just was curious, but that, that comes from teachers and they want to have the ability to to allow that.
Yeah. So that was a robust part of the conversation that the, the group of, um, teachers that came in over the summer to help formulate this plan. And the ultimate decision to say it should be at teacher discretion is partially a acknowledgement that, um, not all teachers want to do it exactly the same way. And yet, um, so part of, so part of this process, um, backing up a little bit, is that, uh, last year in our, um, in our professional development cycle of inquiry, um, where t- teachers take on a particular topic and do some research and some experimentation, a lot of teachers looked at cellphones as, as a, as a place to to do some inquiry. And as part of that, um, there's a group of teachers who implemented, uh, tech breaks or cellphone breaks into their classroom. So they said at this, to the students, we are going to have a tech break at exactly, you know, nine forty-two. Um, so at nine forty-two, you get to use your cellphone. And the feedback or the response to that felt really positive to those teachers. Um, and they felt like that worked. So they, at the end of the year, when they're sharing the results of their research, said to the rest of the staff, we implemented these tech breaks. It felt like it was a good idea. And partly, you know, that, you know, that fits in with what we understand about, uh, predictability and being able to schedule your time. Like one of the, um, one of the helpful sort of tools that we're, that we're presenting this to students in this list of things you can do is to schedule your scroll time, right? So how many of us, like, okay, dinner's over, dishes are away, and now I'm just going to do. How many of us, like, okay, dinner's over, dishes are away, and now I'm just going to do my thing. Right? And I'm going to look and, you know, laugh at my little funny videos that whatever, but that's my time. Right? I'm not going to do it during. My work day, I'm not going to do it when I'm with my family, I'm not going to do it during dinner, I have my time. And that's a, a judgment that we can make with our adult brains. Um, provided we all have them and, um. But, but adolescent brains are not always doing this, so what we're saying to them is, like, you can do this. But you can plan it and you can set it aside for now because you know it's coming. So that. Z, z, that happens in your hip pocket. If you know, in twenty minutes, I'm going to be able to respond to that, that's very different from, I don't know if I'm going to be able to respond to that. Right? So it creates a sense of urgency that we're trying to withdraw so that they can schedule it and plan it. And then again, it's, it's all about self-regulation, executive functioning. So. Yes. Breaks are going to be built in by teacher, but some teachers are going to say, you know what? We got a lot to do today. Not going to be a break today. Just understand that. Here we go. We got a lot of conversations to have, we got a lot to do, we're going to have a test. Whatever it is, is not going to be a break today, but at least. The student is aware and they can predict their environment in a way that helps them sort of ease their anxiety around it. I hope that answers your question a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's really great. Thank you. I, that was really illuminating. And then my last question is, will you just remind me? I can't quite remember, I know there's some like firewall setups, so there's. They can take their, they'll have tech breaks, they can use them during lunch or between classes. But there are certain sites they can't access, like are they on social media in, during these times or like what? Will you remind me of that?
Yeah, so, so firewalls are tricky because there's always workarounds, but, um. But in the building, uh, firewalls are typically around sites that are, we don't want students to engage with at all. So, uh, the tech department, I, as far as I understand, they, they continually update sites that we want to add to the firewall. Um, no, it's not about, uh. Restricting them from TikTok or, or Instagram. It's more like. Adult sites or sites that, you know, r- really like they should not have access to. Um, but, um. So. You know, I, I don't know, Allison, if you have more insight on that particular.
No, I agree, I agree with you.
So like all their apps will work, like their Facebook and their Instagram and their, okay.
Yeah, you know, like we could, we could put in restrictions around on the wifi. But that doesn't stop them from being able to access it with their, um, with their data plan. So they could just turn off the wifi, go to their data and they can do whatever they want. So again, like it's, it's, it's a cat and mouse game and, you know, you just can't. You can't constantly try to like.
Sure.
Block the, the maze.
And maybe this is part of what you're thinking with the, um, the norms, but that. Sounds like it could be like a great, like, aspect of the norms in terms of like, what are we using, what are we using these sites for? And what's, and I'm sure that's all wrapped up in your.
Yeah.
So I'd love to hear more about that one day, but.
So talking, talking to students about the choices that they make with these incredibly powerful devices that can allow them access. And abilities to do things that we are horrified by, right? So, you know, we can go back twenty years or fifteen years. And remember the time when we thought, oh, great, you can call me when practice is over so I can come pick you up. Sounds like a great idea. We had no idea we were giving them access to everything in the world, right? And even including things that we're horrified by, so. Now, you know, we have fourteen-year-olds who have access to things that they really should not. Right? So now we have to teach them. How to. Regulate that access on their own. That's a bigger trial, challenge, but that, that's what, that's what really is at the root of all.
Thank you.
The only, yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add is this is a much, much tinier response. Than some school committees are going for. I mean, you're seeing more and more schools decide to. Shut down students' ability for the whole day. Go into school, you have your phone away, it's shut down, it won't even function. You know, you're off, you get it again at lunch and you get it again at the end of the day. This is much tinier, really what you're doing is you're making a clear message to students. That it's time to put your cell phone away and get to learning. And there will be many opportunities to be able to use your cell phone. So I find this far more gentle and acceptable for students. Um, and, and, and the reality is, the reason why s- schools are going to these drastic measures. Is because we're, we're seeing the impact. Of students tuning their teachers out and they're learning out because they're so addicted to their phones. So this is a really positive way to help them.
I would just spin your language a little bit, Cindy, um, from gentle or easier or smaller. To, um, more inclusive of the students.
Yeah.
And more educational in terms of students being able to make their own choices and develop their own. So. You know, yes, we could put them in pouches that seal and you can't get them until two o'clock. But what is the student learning? About how to regulate their cell phone use?
Correct.
In that process, not really that much. So I appreciate other districts', um, approach with that, and I understand why they're doing that. Um, my hope is that our students will. Um, use this procedures to learn their own self-regulation, which is really, you know, that's a challenge for all of us, right?
And my belief is that students can't.
I believe so.
Uh, Cindy, can you entertain a motion to approve?
I was just going to do that, I was just going to do that. So do we have a motion to approve these two changes?
Somebody's going to have a motion to approve these two changes.
Okay, do we have a second? Hello?
All of a second.
Thank you, Shannon.
Sorry, I was having a really hard time with the what.
Well, I just, I didn't want to, I didn't want to not give you a chance to weigh in, so, um. Great, is there any more discussion before we vote?
Just, just one last, just one last thing, I hope, I hope that this document can be a kind of living document and that it can keep coming up for discussion and, and, you know, I mean, as things change, like. Um, you know, obviously like, w- w- we sort of understand the problems, but. Uh, on the other hand, you know, in a year from now, who knows what's going on, so I hope we can keep talking about it.
Thanks, Ben, I appreciate that. Yes.
All right, so let's take a vote, Ben.
Ben Hershey, I.
And Maren.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, I.
Lori.
Lori Garcia, I.
Damon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
And Cindy Kozinski, I.
Thank you all, and Shannon, it's great to be a part of a meeting with you again.
It's good to see you again.
Good to see you too. Thank you all.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you, and I'm all set, Cindy.
Um, what about Nick's presentation?
Yeah, I think he's next on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, he's not on the, we must be looking at a very different agenda.
You must, yeah.
No, it's, it's on there, but we moved it down. So we'll just slide this in right here.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to officially introduce myself to the community. I'm Nick Burnier, the new Director of Business Services, um, replacing Dale, who was here for quite some time. Um, and I'd like to also take this opportunity to, um, thank the committee for the, uh, this opportunity. Um, though I haven't been here for long, um, it's, it's been a great two months, um, and. I'm, you know, having a really positive vibes here and I, I think this is going to be a wonderful place, uh, in which to work, so. Um, you know, thank you for the environment that, that you've helped to create and, and that you support. And for the opportunity, uh, to, for me to be able to work in it. Um, in my previous district, I would, um, attend monthly school committee meetings and just give a short finance office report. To the school committee, sort of just talking about goings-on within the department. Um, which was included in, in the, the packet that you were sent, so, um, I hope that you all have access to that report. Um, and, you know, that you've been able to, to look at it. Um, so it's been a busy couple of months since I, I came on board. Um, the number one job at, at first was to close the books on fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and, and see where we ended up, um, which kind of is a, a good segue to number one, uh, on my report. Um, then closed in your packet is the quarterly appropriation report. Um, for the final quarter of, of last fiscal year. Um, the year ended with, with quite a large deficit, uh, of over one point two million dollars. Um, however, an amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand was budgeted from school choice originally to, to go against that, so. Um, the deficit was, was not that large, it was really, um, five hundred ninety-seven, uh, thousand dollars, uh. Nine hundred twelve dollars and thirty cents. Um. So in order to be able to close the books, um, expenses were reclassified, um. To, you know, other funding sources to be able to cover the remainder of the deficit. Um, I'd like to note that this was an abnormally large deficit and, and probably the. Only one in, in years that has occurred at the end of a fiscal year. Um. This was caused mainly by increased, uh, out-of-district tuition. Um, for, for some students who require replacements outside of district. Um, uh, often that can be unpredictable when you're budgeting, um, because you have no knowledge or. You know, control over who's going to move in and out of the district. Um, and we're obviously required to provide a free and appropriate public education to everybody. Um, who, who lives here, so, um, there was an increase, uh, in out-of-district tuition last year. Um, which, you know, piggybacking on that led to, um, an increase in specialized transportation costs. Um. And also increased utility costs, which is nothing new, um, given the, uh, economy that we're in currently. Um, more detail is provided in the reclassification summary document that's enclosed with this memo that was part of your, your packet. I basically just came up with a little, you know, summary document of, of what expenses were reclassified where. Um, which basically shows you, um, what funding sources those expenses were, were reclassified to. Um. So in the end, um, the local appropriation gets zeroed out, as you can see in our report, all of the, um. Appropriation has been expended. Um, which will, you know, I'm going to go a little out of order here, um, lead me to begin, uh, my end of the year financial report. Um, that I'm currently in the process of gathering the information that I need to, to complete. Um, this is a, it's an annual report required by DESI. Um, it, it's, it's a requirement that came about with Ed reform way back in nineteen ninety-three. Um, and it's, um, basically a large report of all of our revenue and expenses from last year. Um, from all different funding sources, um, it's. Quite the involved report, it will take the entire month of September to complete. Um, and it's, it's due by September thirtieth. Um, so right now I'm in the process of gathering, you know, all the info that I need. Um, you know, whether it's from our accounting software or other people, um, there, there are certain pieces that I need from other folks that work in the district. And also on the city side, um, for me to be able to complete the report, so. Um, as soon as I have all that, um, that will largely take up the month of September. Uh, moving back to the, the second thing on my, my report, um, we were recently awarded a social emotional learning and mental health grant. Uh, from the state in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars. Um, I, I don't know how many years we had this grant, I know we had it last year because I, I definitely have, um. Amounts up, up from there to report, um, but I, I'm, I. Have no idea if we had it before that, but, um, it's, it's great that it's going to continue. Um, because this grant money will be used to fund the salary of, uh, a new adjustment counselor at East Hampton High School. Uh, we're very thankful and excited for this opportunity, um, to better serve our, our students' emotional needs as they, you know, continue to recover from the. Impacts of, um, of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, so that's, you know, basically it for my, my business office report, other than that, we've been very busy with, uh, with bus passes, as I mentioned earlier. Um, and also. Beginning the process of requalifying families for free and reduced lunch. Now, that might sound confusing because you've, you know, been hearing that meals will not be charged this year. Um, in the state of Massachusetts, which is completely true, families will not pay for meals. Um. Because the state, um, basically decided to supplement what the USDA has allocated, um, to pay for school meals. That being said, the state has asked us to, or real, didn't really ask us, they told us that we had to, um. Re-qualify families that, that would qualify for free or reduced lunch. Um, you know, should the meals have been paid and, and the reason why they're doing that. Um. I mean, it is tied to chapter seventy funding, um, but. You know, there's a lot of families that have probably fallen off the state radar screen in terms of. Their income status over the course of the pandemic because meals have not been paid since. You know, what, March of two thousand twenty, right before the closure happened. Um, so there, there's a lot of families that, you know, may not qualify for other benefits like Mass Health or SNAP or, or WIC. Um, but still based on income would qualify for free or reduced lunch. Um, and the state does not have any sort of accurate count of, of how many of these folks are out there. Um, so we've really been, um, you know, with the help of Jean Libby pushing, um. The information out there to try to get as many families to complete the paperwork as they can. Because, you know, even though they're not going to pay for meals this year, eventually in the future, they may have to. Um, if P E B T benefits are extended, um, families that qualify will have access to those benefits. Um, so it's important that, that, you know, we do really get an accurate count of, of who would qualify. Um, and there's also some in-district, you know, benefits of sorts that, that families could access, such as not having to pay for a bus pass. Or athletic fees, um, you know, or things like that, so. Um, the paperwork is on the, it's on the website, it's definitely been communicated and it will also go home with, um, students when school begins. So we can, um, re-qualify people as. You know, a- as much as we can and, and also taking into account, there's a lot of families who've never filled out this paperwork because. Um, their children weren't in school the last time that paperwork was required because they're young, so. Um, as I said, it's been a pretty busy summer. Um, so that, um, that would conclude my, my business report. Um, the second part says personnel update, um, again, in my previous district, I would give a report to the committee once a month. Uh, just a short personnel report, basically saying how many new hires there were, how many separations there were, transfers within district. Um, you know, I don't have that completed for now, I was going to do the whole summer in one fell swoop and report it in September. Um, you know, so I'll work with Sue Colby to make sure that our, our names and numbers match and. Um, just basically give the committee an idea of all the folks that have been hired and, you know, separations that occur. Um, also vacancies, current vacancies within the district, who I would, you know, do that every month as well. Um, right now, in terms of vacancies, there aren't many, um, there's, there's a custodial position. Um, our IT director, um, we're in the process of interviewing. A couple pair of professional positions and a, a point seven health teacher at the high school. I believe that's all the current vacancy, so. Um, with all you're hearing about staffing shortages and everything, uh, we're really lucky here, we're, we're not really seeing an impact. That some other places are, wh- which is very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No?
I just want to thank you very much, Nick, for your presentation, I think it's also great that you've joined our, uh, community. And our committee and, uh, just really appreciating the professionalism that you bring to our, to our whole team, so thank you so much, I look forward to working with you a lot on the finance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, um, that was great. Yeah, the confusion was we had the, the Governor Baker letter up top. With correspondence, so I thought we were just on touch base and then go on further. Um, with your presentation, but we covered everything, so we're all set. So that's good. All right, um, so if there aren't any other questions, thank you, Nick. Um, we'll be hearing from you, um, periodically, which is really nice. Um, and we'll go on to, um. Subcommittee reports, finance subcommittee. Um. Maren?
Yeah, so the finance subcommittee has met, um, a lot of the things Nick has already covered, so we don't need to sort of reiterate those pieces. Um, we are reviewing, uh, just going to put it out there and clear that we will be as a committee looking at this in September. Um, we're looking at how we are being directed to move forward with our budget. Uh, based on state guidance, um, with the discrepancy between the budget that we passed in March. And the budget that was approved by the, uh. City council and the mayor's office, um, and the agreement that we had set forth, so we are, uh, working through those details. Um, and we'll report back, uh, and to engage that process in a. Probably in September in one of our school committee meetings then at that time, so. Um, but otherwise, um, like Nick said, uh, we've been able to, uh, manage some big changes in, uh. Costs, uh, last year, uh, but that is, um. costs last year, but that is depleted our additional resources even more. And so all the more money that we need to then be in conversation and are in conversation with the city council around those additional appropriations that they promised based on summer agreements. So we're working forward on those kinds of steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee updates, Lori?
I would like to report that I was thankful to be invited by Rebecca Edwards and the Healthy Youth Coalition to a retreat that they held a month ago, and it was very worthwhile to attend and to see the dedication of so many people in this community. Two areas that were of particular interest. One is working on the problem of vaping, and I'd like to continue being involved with that. And there was also a very good discussion and a presentation on being supportive of LGBTQ plus youth. And so once again, thank you to Rebecca for reaching out and including me. And I, Shannon, I see you're on. I haven't seen anything about policies coming through. I didn't receive any emails. I don't know if Sue, are you on? I haven't seen any new policies. I haven't seen any new policies come through that we even need to meet about. So.
I haven't seen anything. I have not, no. And I've been trying to keep up with it. So we didn't have anything that's come up.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Shannon. I just wanted
Yeah.
to make sure about that. So Cindy, can I move on to a very exciting other?
Wait a minute, Ben, you don't have a collaborative update, correct?
No, I think tomorrow, tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, sure. Then we can move on to other.
Okay, I would like to thank Julian Levin, who attended a three day Zoom, very intensive workshop with me in July. And it was held by the Center for Applied Linguistics, and the title was Leading Dual Language Programs. And we are going to hopefully move ahead with a focus group this fall and plan our first dual language kindergarten class for the following school year.
That's excellent. You've been working on that for a long time. Very nice. Now, Ben.
Excellent news, Lori. And Julian. That's awesome. Thank you so much for keeping that motion forward.
And I'd like to thank Dr. Leclerc for supporting it because it was funded from the district. And I know you know, we've had some pretty intense conversations about our budget. We would have loved to have been able to open up this first dual language classroom with the arrival of our elementary school students and our beautiful new school, but the pandemic also pushed it to the back burner. But we're going full steam ahead. So thank you all for your support.
So that'll be for next fall, correct? And are are you going to have, like, do you plan a presentation ahead of time? Like, in the spring?
Of course, as I said, Julianne and I talked about who would make up the focus group. It's not going to be just the two of us, obviously. So we are just in the planning stages of bringing together parties who can stakeholders and teachers in the school who can help move this forward. So if there's anyone in the community that would like to be considered to be involved with this as well, who has a specific expertise in dual language programs, please get in touch with me. Thank you.
And then as it develops, you'll routinely
Yes.
Report out.
Yes, of course.
Excellent. Ben, I think you have three things you wanted to toss out for other.
Definitely two, but maybe three, actually. So the first one is I've been doing some research on the idea of a curriculum subcommittee. And I've been sort of, you know, scoping out the situation around the state and they're everywhere. They're they exist in dozens and dozens of of districts. Including Northampton, they have one. And I've just been thinking about the possibilities with this. I think it would be really helpful for us to be able to have a little bit more transparency between like what's happening in the schools at the curriculum level and what, you know, and what we're doing. There's all kinds of possibilities here around how this might be beneficial. And, you know, I'm thinking of things like reviewing and advocating for proposed new additions to the 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 curriculum, similar to what I just asked Principal Evans is keeping the curriculum as a kind of conversation that can change and and evolve as needed. I like the idea of like reviewing reports of of curriculum related complaints and bringing that back to us as a as a full committee. There's there's ways in which you always hear parents or you hear people talk about concerns they're having with what's going on in the schools around this kind of thing. And one of the big ones over the last year or so has been like questions around digital literacy and tech use in schools. In fact, the conversation about consequences around cellphone use almost has a curriculum energy to it that could be pretty fascinating to delve into. I've heard there are some great people in this district, parents in this district who have years of experience with this. And, you know, we've talked about how how do you introduce children to questions around how to navigate, you know, the internet responsibly, you know, not that kids really under ten have devices, some do. But what does it mean to like start using your device with with a responsible sort of sense of what's what's appropriate, you know, even before they get to high school? Lots of things we could get into around around a a curriculum subcommittee, but I think it would be invaluable for us to talk about that more and and maybe get that in motion. Like, I'd be happy to be involved in it. I'd be happy to have someone else run with it, but I think it it's something that we we might be missing a little bit. So I'd love to bring that up somehow. Maybe I don't know if it's a if it's a conversation for that for another meeting or if we can talk about it now. That's one thing, the the curriculum subcommittee. I can say more about that. The second thing that has been on my mind is is related to the student representative representative from the high school and how they are important part of what we do, but I don't feel like we're getting enough information about what the student experience is directly from students. It's always, there's always an intermediary or some middle person who's describing things. So this is also something that is statewide. You see it everywhere. A lot of districts have it. Not every district uses it appropriately or you know, effectively. I think we're one of the ones that needs to out our game a little bit here. One of the most common things people do is they create a student advisory committee. And so one of the things that could happen is if I wish Principal Evans was still here, but you know, I I saw one district where the principal of the high school held elections and, you know, they, you know, for five positions and students can can run for the for a position on the student advisory committee. And that committee would meet with us. And I think the standard by law M G L sort of description is that it's five times a year, like every other month essentially. So it's not terrible. Obviously, like he, you know, Principal Evans made the point that like this question of like, everybody's busy and and kids, when they get out of school, they don't, they're done with school and they don't necessarily want to do this, but hopefully we would get students who are motivated to like be part of this process. It's just another thing that involves the conversation, but I think that like a the the a group of student leaders coming to us and reporting to us what they're going through and experiencing could be very impactful. By helping us identify areas of, you know, concern, potential growth that that we need to know about, that we can track kind of over time. Lots of possibilities there. I'm just wanting to hear more from students directly. So those are my two big. I don't know, I would call them projects. I'd love to try to make those happen. So I wanted to put it out there and see if there's a way we could either talk about it now or put it on an agenda for the future or what you all think I could do to better push this along going forward.
So we could put it on the agenda for future times, but I think you've already, correct me if I'm wrong, begun talking about these things with Dr. Leclerc?
We talked about this. Yep, we had a discussion and Julian was was obviously brought up as a possible person who could help help with this. And she is also we we started this last year where we had some listening sessions and she's doing that again, which is fantastic. And that is a version of this where we're like, you know, a rep a rep from our committee or, you know, it's people in higher the higher admin at any Santa could go into the schools and actually hear from students, but how do we make this a more official type kind of participatory government, you know, experience for students? So yeah, we got the conversation started, but I wanna I wanna try to keep it going.
Yeah, I I can add regarding the curriculum piece. I did have a conversation with Julianne and she's working on putting a group together. She's gathering information on what other communities are doing. As I explained to Ben, we have curriculum revision cycles already in East Hampton where we review curriculum on a regular five year rotation. And so she's going to expand that and grow that and consult with some of the other curriculum directors in the area and reach out to the committee in the fall when school gets started, this committee to see if there's someone that wants to sit with her and help shape that committee and possibly have a seat on that committee.
So I I also like the idea of students reporting to the school committee on a more frequent basis and in a much more detailed way. So
Yeah, I'm just one one example, like what's their their trying to get their game together around this right now. And what they're doing is they're dedicating like the first forty five minutes of you know, every other month's meeting to the students kind of, you know, we dedicate that first forty five minutes to them and and their presentation or whatever it is. And we can figure out how the how it goes. Is it is it super formal? Is it conversational? And we could talk about that, but I think that's like us, that's a that's a nice way, right? It's not too intrusive. It gives them a seat at the table a little bit to come and share with us what's going on, but that might be one way to do it. And there is also other kind of other strategies where a rep from our committee might go to the high school and sit with, you know, maybe it's Evans or someone else and and have a conversation with with students about you know, what their concerns are for the whole year. Let's say, for instance, like in the next few weeks, you know, a little meeting could happen at the high school, like what are the things you want to map out and kind of plan for across the academic year. And then we could track that over the course of the year. So there's lots of ways we could do it. I just, I'm I'm my my over the my time here, it's just been I've been sort of noticing that the student voice is really underrepresented. At least as far as I can tell. And it would be great to hear from more of them.
I would I would put it out there. I think that your suggestion right there, Ben, about, you know, I think it takes us to reach out to them to help make the conversation initiated. And so going to attending school council or attending, you know, things that are happening there is part of that conversation. And out of that, then might get their interest to be coming back and giving us more information. I think we want to be careful about sort of asking, saying, oh, you guys should be reporting to us more. I don't think it's 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 needs to be more of that. It gets to what both of us sort of commented to Principal Evans about. It's more about collaboration. It's more about the conversation, not reporting out. That's what, you know, kills any conversation and minimizes, especially with teenagers and such. So I I think that that's if you're interested in sort of stepping into that a little bit more, I think that that's a place to start and recommend that. And and then from there, hopefully you can build towards getting something that does make it more public and more engaged possibly. So.
I think the main thing I'm thinking about is just how to make it official. Like, I I don't want it to be this thing that we sort of try to do and it just slips away. Like, I would love it to be a part of the, you know, infrastructure of how our district works. But maybe that is just the starting point. Like, you know, I'm I'm all about that collaborative kind of like exchange as opposed to just a top down approach. And so it does seem like it'd be almost more beneficial to to go to go to them and and invite them to talk to us or, you know. But I'm open to it.
And I know we talked about that a little bit before, about getting together with some more of the students and getting more hear more hear more voices. And I'm still not opposed to helping out and getting involved in that. I just don't know where to start. And I know that we had talked about, I'm trying to find the right policy or whatever it was that we need that was already in place to go forward with that. And I I'm still having trouble finding all that information. So I'm gonna continue to look through that and see what I can find. And see if we can at least start somewhere. If nothing else, I can I can get ahold of Sue. She might be able to help.
I mean, I've I've seen some of it. I I think it's in there, but but in the in the in the policies, but I this is this is maybe not even a, I'm not thinking of it in terms of policy. I'm just thinking about like, how do we enact this? How do we empower students to come and talk to us and we talk to them?
Right. And if it's part of a policy, I mean, then we can kind of make sure it happens. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I I can say that historically, we had students come and student group groups come quite frequently. It's just that the last couple of years have been so hard and so taken up with what's been going on that we've gotten away from it. And I think it's a good year for us to get back to having students come back and talk to us. In in years past, we've had a multitude of presentations by students with our ability to ask them questions and and really find out what's going on. I think we just didn't didn't get back to that yet. So I am all in favor of us beginning that and improving it every year. So Megan and then Lori.
I was just gonna say, I love both of these ideas. I love the idea of making it something, I don't know if the words like official or policy or whatever it is, but like, I love the idea of just having a rep from school committee go to, you know, quarterly student council meetings or something, a place where they're already gathering. They're already talking. And I don't know if that's the appropriate forum where they're actually talking about stuff, but if we go to them, I think on some sort of regular quarterly basis or trimester basis or something, I think that'd be a really neat way. And then that one person who sort of gets to be a fly on the wall and hear what they're talking about can report back to all of us and tell us what students are thinking about. So I don't know if that requires like a vote to like set that one person's gonna do that and pick who to. I I love that idea. And the other thing I was gonna say is I love this idea of curriculum committee. I think not so much emails, but like when we're just out and about and talking to people, I would say this is like the number one thing that people come up and talk to me about besides for COVID related things. That's the very bad news. But, you know, they want to talk about like, oh, this tech curriculum or oh, science curriculums or oh, they how the history stuff is doing. I love the idea of having an official subcommittee where parents have a place to hear, you know, we keep using this word transparency. It really is just like, you know, like, do they have a place to hear what's going on and how that review, that five year review happens? I love the idea of a subcommittee for that. And I would be totally in favor of creating a new subcommittee. And I want to be, so in in this like same vein, I attended not just my own kids playdates that P T O and Jean Libby put on, but some of the other grades too. And I actually met a parent who this is their like their PhD is in like educational literacy, technology. I don't know. It was like, it was like the exact specific thing that we've all been talking about for a year. So we have a parent in the district who is a PhD on that with lots of expertise and just it's like, oh, this is really cool. We can tap into some of these community resources and the resources we already have in the school with our expertise. So I love the idea.
Lori?
Thanks, Megan. I agree with everything you said. You too, Ben. I would like to remind us all that we have had a lot of strong student voices during the pandemic come and present to us. We had the committee that really convinced us to have their prom live. We had athletes come to convince us to allow them to play. So we have had a lot of student voices. And I don't know how I was so privileged to be invited to a presentation at the high school last spring. Ben, I think you were there too. Two of us were there with the LGBTQ plus group. That was also extremely rewarding to be able to be in the school and hear the students and just see how dynamic. Yeah, I don't I really don't know how we were invited to that, but I thank them for inviting us.
This after that, after that session, I said to Julianne, this is exactly what I, this is it right here. Like, how can we do this? Like with with regularity? This, after that, after that session, I said to Julianne, this is exactly what I, this is it right here. Like, how can we do this? Like with, with regularity? Um, as a, as a, you know, a regular part of our, our, our work here. Um. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's unofficial reps who come in, athletes and, and, you know, people who want to talk about different things going on in school. Totally amazing. I actually would love to have them, students be part of like our public speak and, and, you know, more in a ro, more robust way. Um, but yeah, I'm just thinking like an official student presence that we are listening to them. They are listening to us and we are like, really like thinking about that as we make decisions in the district. Just seems like it would be, it would be great, you know? Would it be useful for me to reach out to like, uh, to Principal Evans and, and sort of say like, hey, you know, we were talking about this and, and, uh, we, you know, how, how could it work where someone from our group would come and sit in and see how y'all are doing? Maybe that's a first step.
I, I, I really liked the idea of you going and talking to the students and then reporting out. But what I really enjoy and I would like to do more of is hearing the students routinely come to a school committee meeting and report out themselves. Because it's not, it's not the same to me as hearing those great student voices um, coming to us and talking about concerns they're having, um, thoughts that they're having and things they would like to change. And I think that to me is a place where we could, um, just simply put a place, um, once we got this going, put a place in, in the agenda for, you know, call it whatever you want, student voices. Um, you know, student presentations and just get back to more of these, uh, you know, interactions where we actually get to hear students talk about the things that are on their mind. Lori.
I agree with you, and that's why I brought up those powerful students that did come, because not only do we get to hear them, the public gets to see just how dynamic our student body is.
I wonder, I, I think, um, my sort of saying we should go to them is really about like, do they feel empowered to talk to us? Do they even know who Megan Harvey is? Like, when, why come and talk to us about it? But I love the idea of we can go to them and like get the excitement for it and then be like, okay, so we're doing this on Tuesday night.
Yeah.
We just all talked here, like, will you all come and, and just being like faces that they know and names that they know?
You know, and you guys are making me think like, how great would it be to have some students come and talk about what their experience of this new cellphone policy has been, like, you know, like halfway through the year, like, is it working? Are you having, you know, are you able to follow along with what's being asked of you? Like, how is that restorative process working? I mean, it would, it would, that's the kind of thing I mean, like, what are these policies actually doing to and for students? Um, and us understanding that, I think would be like, you know, pretty valuable.
Yeah.
Also, I mean,
It's an excellent use for class presidents to reach out to the student body and for the student council to do that. And I think that if we just let it be known, um, that that's our hope and expectation, that they'll come, that they'll, we can get, um, get this rolling in a way that will become more routine. And then they will pick their agenda that they're going to come and talk to us about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like that they, it's, they would come to us with their agenda. Yeah. I mean, maybe we could get it in advance, get a look at it, have our own thoughts, maybe that we can have a discussion about things. Um, that seems like a good start.
Dr. Leclerc, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I think it could work. I mean, I think that, um, we'd need to have some guidance around it. As Ben said, you know, get an agenda ahead of time, know, know what they're coming for so that we can be prepared to have dialogue around it.
Okay, so we have our, our new vision that we're gonna work on. Ben's gonna lead the way right now.
Sounds good. I'm ready. Actually, just last, last, last but not least, Megan mentioned this, um, uh, Jean Libby and, and PTO. I just wanted to like, give a shout out, big congratulations, a thank you. They put on these incredible playdates, not a talk for a couple of weeks, and Megan and I kind of hit up a bunch of those and it was an amazing experience to watch, uh, these people who didn't know each other come together. Um, you know, the Maple, the center path and families, this, this like the wall came down and all of a sudden these people are starting to communicate. Um, it was pretty fantastic and I had the chance, like real privilege of meeting like three or four families who are brand new to the district. Uh, and it was really insightful to hear how excited they were to be involved in this district and to hear about like how, somebody said something like Amherst has had like a great reputation. Amherst is over. It's now about East Hampton or something like that. And, and I just thought like, this is a, a pretty fantastic thing to see and to just meet them at the threshold with, with like positivity and kind of like, you know, welcome aboard kind of spirit was, was great. And so, you know, kudos to Jean Libby and the PTO. They really, they really rocked it. Yeah.
Okay. Any other, other?
This seems like a good time for the PTO update.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect transition. Um, so they have been meeting all summer, um, working really hard. They had a really successful year last year. I know we, gosh, that was a while ago at this point, but I wrapped up and sort of reminded us all of what the stuff that they did last year, and they are gearing up to do all of that plus more in this coming year. Um, so in terms of like planning ahead, they are working on four different fundraisers that will sort of be quarterly. So they're, and they're, these are sort of becoming our annual PTO fundraisers. Those are the bulb sale. Um, and then more towards the holiday season, a citrus sale and then silver graphics. Um, and then early next year, um, the Meadowview Farms fundraiser, both or all four of those are really successful, um, and parents seem to really enjoy them. Um, so look for those coming up. I have been enjoying the bulb sale. I planted bulbs and then completely forgot about them and was very surprised when they actually came up, which was pretty exciting for, um, I kind of have a little bit of a black thumb. So, um, they are always looking for more parent volunteers. There have been more parents that are getting involved sort of um, slowly, but it's been a core group of volunteers who've been doing a lot of this work and they love to have parents come and it's totally fine to just come for one meeting and pick up one little piece of volunteering and then, you know, drop off when life gets busy and then come back in. Um, it does not require your full-time commitment, but, um, they love to have as many parents as possible. Um, they are also really hoping for a great, uh, garden again. Um, we've had some really great garden committee and, um, gardening opportunities for the young kids. Uh, it sounds like we're gonna have some great opportunity for that at the new school. Um, and so that's a committee in particular, if you are interested in helping the little ones little through eighth grade, um, garden, that's something that is on their mind and they are working on. Um, they did, uh, along with Jean Libby, host a variety. Normally they just do sort of kindergarten playdates, but this year, given the transition to Mountain View, they did pre-K kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth and fifth, although I've been instructed that I'm supposed to call the older grades not a playdate, but a hang. Um, you know, the, the language matters to the fourth and fifth graders, but they had an awesome hang for those grades and playdate for the younger grades, um, where the kids really got together and parents, I, we saw them exchanging phone numbers and, and doing all sorts of great stuff. Um, they donated twelve hundred dollars, dollars to the library for more books. Um, and at the end of last year with the funds that they raised. And, uh, as always, you can select to, uh, do the, the donation through, um, your Amazon smile. So it's no cost to you, but it, when you order from Amazon, if you enter through Amazon smile, it gives a portion of your sales to, of what your sales or of what you buy to the PTO. And they also have Venmo if you're interested in just, I don't know, helping out the, the PTO at some point. So, um, the co-chairs right now are Megan Kelly Bag and Ann Tally, and there's a lot of really committed volunteers in that group and, and they are looking forward to seeing you at some meetings.
All right. Thank you. Any other, other? All right, then let's go to our, um, matters for action.
I have a fee for us. Make sure I'm still on. Okay, great. All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated six sixteen twenty twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents.
I second that.
Okay, Shannon. Sorry, I all switched, so I started with Shannon on my screen.
Shannon Dunham, I. Sorry, Erin.
Mary Goldstein, I.
Lori.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated six sixteen twenty twenty-two in the amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
I second that.
Okay, Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated six thirty twenty twenty-two in the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second that.
Okay, Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Erin?
Mary Goldstein, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated six thirty twenty twenty-two in the amount of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second that.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Erin?
Mary Goldstein, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the school lump sum payroll dated six thirty twenty twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
A second that.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated seven fourteen twenty twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents.
A second that.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated six thirty twenty twenty-two in the amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and nineteen cents.
A second that.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated seven twenty-eight twenty twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
A second that.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated eight eleven twenty twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and zero cents.
Second that.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Uh, lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated eight eleven twenty twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
A second that.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I. And next we have a motion to approve an out-of-state trip request for East Hampton High School to Hartford stage in Hartford, Connecticut in the fall of twenty twenty-two and the spring of twenty twenty-three. Dr. Leclerc, is there anything you want to tell us about that or just move to, um, second it?
Um, this is, um, Amy Paulus, the, um, musical director, the theater director. So this is, um, taking the students to see some productions in the fall and the spring.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Are these just day trips?
Yes, yes.
Sounds fun.
Excellent. Okay, Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. All right. Um, so all we have to do is tell the public our next meeting is gonna be September thirteenth, then we have October eleventh, October twenty-fifth, November eighth and December thirteenth. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I, one question, I, I had the agenda up on my phone and it's not up now. Did we have to approve minutes from before? Did we not approve the minutes?
No, they were just submitted.
Oh, okay. Just double checking. Sorry. So I make a motion to, sure, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Mary Goldstein, I.
Laurie Garcia, buenas noches.
And best of luck to all the teachers. This can be a good week. Ben Hershey, good night.
Megan Harvey, good night.
And Cindy Kuzensky, good night. And ditto to all the teachers and everybody. Have a great year.
His parents.
Yes. That's true.
Everybody.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.